So I had stopped the recording, this is the May 3rd meeting of the Bristol Bristol complaining, planning commission, I'm all flustered because of this. And I stopped recording because we were late starting to not record a bunch of banter. We went through, prior to reactivating this, thank you Chris for reminding me, through some administrative matters and we just approved some modifications formally that we had discussed and approved, agreed on at our last meeting to our policies and procedures. The next item to discuss is the bylaw modernization brain activity, which has at best been challenging. We went out for, if you recall, we went out for public bidding, if you will, received no proposals. We went back out to two entities with an invitation and received a no interest to workload. And then one of them was Addison County Regional Planning, which said, yes, we can do it. And they were, but I haven't received any detail from them, so I need to poke them, I guess, a little bit and formalize that a little bit. But it looks to me like plant, regional planning has capacity and willingness to help us out with that. I included in the prep package who the various awards of the bylaw monitoring modernization grant were from the, because this is a statewide grant. It's kind of interesting what, who was awarded what locally. There was an award to Lincoln. I think Heinsberg was another one I recall, it was fairly local as well. So that was some kind of information, I'm thinking it would be good to understand as we progress, what other locations might be doing and what we may be able to glean from them. So I think that's a good working document, keep in our back pocket.
Absolutely. Kevin, could I ask a question?
Sure.
To make a comment, I was just, you know, they cut us in half, right? Yet Heinsberg got 20,000 and Waitsfield got 27,000. So I'm just bewildered, that's what, as to what their rationales were for essentially the same type of projects, so I just don't understand, but.
Yeah, and you know, we did, we, we, we came up with a pretty tight grant writing. I can, Heinsberg, I can almost understand because they are really on a cusp of expansion, which is so prevalent in Chittenden County.
Yeah.
And I think there's an opportunity there that's worth, from the state's point of view, in the, in the objective, the agenda that, or the objectives of this program, to really encourage, I'm not sure about Waitsfield, but that was my thought when I saw the dollar man on the Heinsberg award. We, we, we don't have that opportunity that Heinsberg has, so I don't know if that made a difference or not, but.
Yeah.
But yeah, I was intrigued, I was intrigued, I think, not, not to pick on Lincoln, but Lincoln got almost as much as we did for a relatively rural area, and I'm not exactly sure.
Yeah.
But yeah, so, so we shouldn't get hung up on who got what, I mean, but you're absolutely right, it was kind of interesting what some of the awards were.
Yeah, but, and I guess when you see all these, you get some idea of why we're not getting, well, it relates to why we're not getting a proposal, maybe, because there's a lot of competition for the expertise and we don't have as much money to go around. So I don't know if that's what, what affected us there.
So yeah, so back and let me, let me look at my notes here. And, and I think when I did go back out with the invitation, I specifically mentioned that there was, in addition to grant money, there could be some town money, so that might have done a little bit there, but we, we're relatively, but you're right, we're relatively small potatoes for some of this other stuff that's going on.
Yeah. Well, that's my gripe for today, so let that go.
I'm not sure, I, I will not say that I didn't see the same thing, but. The next thing and kind of follow along with that is I'd like to have a little bit of a discussion on some sort of ad hoc research evaluation group individuals, some way that we can understand what some of these other towns are doing and, and have subcommittee individuals, I'm not sure what other options, but there's probably other options of focusing on that, so that if we develop, as we develop our task, we have people built, we have it built in that we have this broader vision. So open it up for discussion as to, if that makes sense, how we do it.
What, what would we, we just see what they're doing, presumably they're getting a consultant to give them suggestions.
Very well.
Are you talking about going forward or what, what towns have done in the past, or, and if so, how far back are you looking?
So one, one thing that comes to mind with that is some of it could very well, or should be existing, Middlebury has just gone through a revision of their plan, very detailed and talks to all the points within what the grant requirement is. That's, that's work that is done and going out for public comment. There's something going on in Virgens. And I'm not up to speed on what it is, but they're going through a process and a lot of the same buzzwords are being discussed out in Virgens. Moncton, which we just received books this week, they're updating their zoning as well. So if Lincoln starts doing stuff which will be tied in with regional planning, I think, or even as Heinsberg does stuff, I mean, it's a whole different world up there potentially, but there might be some things we can glean and discuss, bring to the table, discuss for our situation.
Now, if we're enlisting regional planning for helping us out with this, won't they have that stuff kind of already in their pocket as towns are updating plans around us from their review of things?
They would be involved with Addison County plans. And I don't know, and maybe you, you, you could very well be right with that, that they would be very aware of what other towns are doing and maybe bring that to the table. I, I would, I'm sort of alluding to the fact that we want to keep, we want to cast a wide net, I guess, is what I'm alluding to. And, and maybe that's valid, maybe it's not, so that's why I wanted to have a little bit of discussion.
So it's my impression, I don't know if this is accurate, that most everybody's going to come up with a lot of similar ideas, which is to, like, make ADUs easier to build, you know, lessen restrictions on size and, and other things and so I don't, maybe Chris, you would have a sense on this, is that basically the same way we're all heading? Do you think, no?
No. Starksboro is, is trying to figure out how to grow. Moncton has no interest in growing, matter of fact, they're deathly afraid that the growth in Moncton in Heinsberg is going to end up in their town next. So their latest revision of their bylaws is actually a little bit restrictive, they didn't really open much up. Starksboro, on the other hand, is actively trying to figure out the right approach for growth and housing is not their focus. It's, they're focusing more on trying to bring a, a business into their community. So it's all over the place as far as what the communities are trying to do around us.
Okay. But our, our focus of our grant is housing.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and affiliated things like walkability and so forth, so I guess, so I'm not sure if, you know, then if seeing what Starksboro is doing is going to help us in this capacity, other places, who's working on housing, do you have a sense? Well, I suppose everybody who got one of those grants, because they're all housing grants.
I believe Virgens is working on it, for somebody that sticks in my head. I don't know who else I know. New Haven's all over the place. Lincoln's actually, Lincoln is one that is looking at it, trying to grow their four town centers. So they're, they're looking at residential growth. And they're actually the only one nearby that would be trying to grow.
So interestingly, I was a little surprised, if you look at that grant list, not everybody's talking about town centers. Some people are talking about infrastructure and different things like that, so it was kind of interesting on how people identified they can support the requirements of this bylaw, right, modernization initiative.
Yeah, well, Heinsberg says, you know, revisions that enable the creation of more village area housing, especially multi-unit dwellings and for redevelopment projects. That sounds sort of similar.
Yeah, they're, they're focusing in on, they're trying to infill around their current village core, where you see the development, like, behind their fire station, across the street from that, in front of NRG, the focus there has been multifamily housing and rental type housing and affordable housing versus single family home type growth.
Yeah.
So something like this, I think that we'd want to, weed thing, weed out things right off the top, towns right off the top, before we went down the hole of looking at what they were doing to compare with what we're doing. Things like this, I'm always cautious of wasted time and effort, by the time you get to the end, you're already too late. For nothing.
Yeah, this, this is a little bit off, off the, well, not really off the topic, but I wasn't around in Vermont to know what, does anybody know what happened in Williston that created what is there now? Did, did the town, which, you know, the town proper, not the, all the big box place? But do you know, does anybody know how they handled that, if they, did they just have no real regulation and just let people sell their land and build whatever they wanted, or?
It was actually a big, long struggle, Melissa, the box stores, Jeff Davis, who was the developer for that, I think spent fifteen to twenty years to get that developed, and until that occurred, there wasn't a lot of growth, other than Williston Road back towards South Burlington. Once Task Four Corners opened up and the box stores went in, then you, then we saw Maple Tree Place go in, and then it just exploded around them. And the village itself, which is backwards Richmond,
Right.
is still very protected and they have very strict zoning there. And I don't.
Right, but, yeah, but that is still part of, I mean, all the big boxes, part of Williston, as is the, the town proper.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they just, I don't know, it just seems sort of a, like it might be a cautionary thing to me.
Well, it, it, it's a natural growth, I mean, one of the biggest things, if you look at that area, I mean, my wife and I were there this weekend, we were commenting, number one concern in Vermont right now is housing, we don't have enough.
Right.
And Williston is probably the only community I know of right now that is constructing housing at a breakneck pace that might actually help with that problem. So it's a double edged sword, we don't want to see the development like we see in Williston in Vermont, but we also want housing, so.
Right. Yeah. Yeah, but it sure seems there's a lot of people that want to live in Bristol, or right around Bristol because of, because it's Bristol, because it's not Williston, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, well, that's what our grant is about.
Yeah, yeah.
In the area, but making changes for more housing, so, I mean, you know, looking at the grants that were given and the descriptions, again, Waitsfield, Heinsberg, sort of talking about the same thing, I, I don't know, Kevin, how were you thinking of, we want to, you know, just approach their planning commission and say, hey, what are you up to? Maybe they're waiting for their consultants, I don't know. We don't know who's gotten, we might find out that nobody's got a consultant, I don't know.
There's a variety of ways that you can approach that, and one, one would be to create a partnership with some of these towns if they so desire to do that.
And Waitsfield, you might have an in on Waitsfield, I mean, town administrator, town administrator sort of kind of lives there. So she might, she might be able to get some in there, at least a good communication path, if, in a, in a barometer, that would be something they might be interested in. Granted, they're Chittenden County technically, right?
No, they're Washington.
Or Washington County, and so, but I don't think that matters, these are state grants, so.
Yeah.
It's nothing we have to act on tonight, but I do, would, I would like to have everybody just keep it in mind and see as our process unfolds, how, how we can keep
Sure.
a wide net out there, if you will, and, and not, not end up too focused on, you know, previous work of the regional planning commission or what the grant requirements are. If that makes sense.
Yep.
Any further comment, or should we just move on? Hearing nothing, we'll, the next item, other interim activities to organize is sort of a follow on with that. I'm thinking about some of the things that we could or should be doing to get some footwork done as we spin up. One thing that specifically comes to mind is, I'll use it as an example, is the select board has made comments about people coming to them with all these problems about why their particular development was reasonable but was denied. Chris has identified some things in the past. If we had that task behind us, assuming we want to do that task, it would make sense to do that, maybe to think about that now, and there could very well be some other things that we want to do along that line, so, again, I'll throw it out for a little banter and discussion and see if there's any traction or if there's other things that we should be considering. That would help us augment the, the point where we actually get down to talking with regional planning.
So are you thinking, as you go through the, possibly before you end up with the regional planning, or whoever does this, maybe tackle some of the zoning concerns, so that when you go to present the housing changes, you could have actually a more thorough package? And so you could actually, I know it sounds terrible, feel like you're, you're doing some planning, not feel like you're just administrating.
So to a large degree, yeah, I'm thinking about that, is if we focus so heavily on the downtown HDR, what, I can't, village planning area.
There you go.
There we go. If we focus so heavily on that and there's things that we should align with in the other zones and don't do that when we go through this whole process, politically, you're going to go out and ask people not too very far down the road to approve zoning regulations again, and it's going to be, why are we doing this type thing? That, that is certainly one thing I'm thinking about. I'm also thinking when we originally came up with the scope that we set down, there was a lot of stuff that we were going to prep, I guess you could say, and and I, I don't know exactly what the timing is right for that, if we still think that those things are important, but there's, there's some little stray pieces that we as a planning commission, we're not going to require a consultant to do. So those are the kind of things I'm thinking about.
If my end, I can pull together and clean up, I've got a fairly loose list at this point of just concerns that people have voiced and, and pull together some sort of, something formal for your next meeting, so you can start looking at that and maybe heading down that avenue from a, I'm not going to focus on housing in the, in the village, I mean, that's basically all. Outside of that, if there's things that you may want to address, I can pull that together for real.
If there's some, if there's some mowing and fruit there, we should definitely take care of it, and then, and I don't know how much is, because the comments have been made rather broadly from the select board, but if there's, we probably should have somebody at some point engage with them to, and Michelle's our point of contact, and maybe it's through her or something, I don't know exactly how it would unfold, but if, if there's, if there's bees and somebody bonnet there, we should figure what tools are to.
And again, I mean, I can facilitate that, her and I can have that discussion to see if my, the list of concerns I have match what she has, so we're not duplicating efforts.
Yeah, that would be great.
So is this, you know, is this, people are complaining about decisions that have been made by the DRB, is that basically what this is coming to, or?
My, my impression is, is that, and it's been, you know, it's very passing comment, talking with the select board, you know, and everybody's got an opinion, whether, if they're denied, about why it should have been denied, but if there's something that's, and, and the people are going to the select board past not having satisfaction with DRB or zoning administrator or whatever, and they end up chewing on the select board, and it gets to the point that some of them are hearing this over and over, I think it could be just another perspective that we may not necessarily see in the administrative trenches, if you will.
I mean, I've had a few where we didn't deny the premise, but when the applicants came in and chatted, there was no way to do the project based on setbacks or scope and scale. One person was very upset that they couldn't put their driveway in their neighbor's lawn, so they didn't have to tear down their barn. Just saying, hey, so I, I will, I will work with Michelle, and again, I hate to duplicate efforts between her and I, and see if we can sort of, there's not a ton out there. But I'll pull together a list for your next meeting, so that it gives you an idea of where you could head, and then you guys can prioritize and, and game plan from there, if that works for you.
Does everybody think about that?
That seemed reasonable, would we want to, if, if these are decisions made by the DRB, would we want to include the DRB in the discussion?
No, actually, I would do just the opposite, your DRB is, is a quasi judicial board.
Right.
They really, they, they read the zoning regs as black and white, and they don't, I, I've reached out to that board earlier, as far as some zoning questions or concerns, and was told that they do not want to be involved in this kind of stuff, because they have to make decisions at a very neutral starting point. So that's the only input from them in the past.
Okay.
And if I remember correctly, at the beginning of the year, right after we passed everything, there were a couple items still lingering that did not make it in, that are still hanging out there too, there's two or three small things, I think, Chris, if you recall.
You are correct.
I have no idea what those are at this point, but.
Makes two of us, it was a while ago.
Enough on that? Everybody happy with the direction we're going?
Yep.
Okay. The next item, other continuing business is, we did, or I did, on behalf for the planning commission, present at the Democratic par, or committees climate change presentation earlier this month. I did attach the slideshow I did, I walked through, and I was, I came away with mixed feelings, quite honestly. I, it was inferred at one point in the conversation, I was throwing the energy committee under the bus, which was not my intention. I did talk about the enhanced energy plan and some of the charges that that enhanced energy plan has for the energy committee, which I'm suspicious that may have been what the issue was. And I felt also that this group was critical, that the planning commission was not doing enough to promote effectively energy conservation and climate change concerns. So I can take that for what it's worth, that's, but there was an individual who had was quite vocal about the fact that we were not, had a working plan and implementing steps based on our goals and policies and implementation volumes. She has offered her assistance to do, to get involved with the planning commission, and I bring that up as to what the desire may be, and this is all blind setting, you guys, I know it is, if, if this individual just wants to work on an energy plant, do we have the capacity to do that as opposed to this individual that wants to get more involved in the planning processes that we have?
Why would they come to work for us rather than with the energy commission?
It was directed towards the planning commission, and I don't know why that perspective, other than the fact, like I said, there, I got the impression that we as a planning commission were not doing enough, I e, we need help.
Okay.
What the energy commission's supposed to do?
The energy committee, so I'm not sure what. But.
And I thought part of the, you know, part of what we want to look at with housing, housing development is, you know, renewable energies or, but just working within the landscape and not, you know, working environmentally, I guess I could say. It's part of what we want to do.
And you're exactly right, Melissa, there's a lot, a lot of, along with the housing issue, there's a lot of discussion within those initiatives for, you know, walkability and, and, you know, less reliance on vehicles and that sort of thing. They were very, they were very complimentary, by the way, and I shouldn't, I shouldn't probably, and I probably should have said this before, but they're very complimentary about the fact that we were working on this housing aspect of things and looking to, you know, make the downtown area more livable, if you will, so. But yeah, they, they do go hand in hand.
My view on this would be if someone wanted to come in and give suggestions as a member of public or something like that, that would be great, but as far as starting a process of making changes with an individual, I, I wouldn't say that would be a good idea with everything else we have going on at this point.
I guess my concern is looking at what, what happened like in Burlington where there's such
I guess my concern is looking at what would happen like in Burlington, where they're suddenly writing their zoning based on. Permits based on what kind of fuel systems you're putting in and forcing landlords to. Do that type of thing. I think that's adding a whole other layer of something that we're not trying to do now. To that, is that this person's trying to do, I don't know, but I guess you need to know that before you invite them in, I guess, before we. But I think it's outside of our purview. That's what the energy.
We're not an ex, we're not an executive function. You know, the 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 planning commission, I mean, the uh. The select board has the executive function here. Uh, so suggestions could certainly be made to the select board. But. Uh, again, I would think that would come from the Energy Committee, rather than from us. It's their, that's their job.
So what I'm hearing is my response to this individual be that if. It is specific to the energy plan, they should be coordinating with the energy committee with their desire to help. Um, if their desire is to, um, get involved with planning. If you will, um, they should apply to the select board. Uh, accordingly. Is that fair, Melissa?
Also, were was she or the people there aware that they can come to this meeting and? And ask questions and make comments at the end of it?
Um, they have participated in public meetings before, so I would have to say yes.
Yeah. So I think that would be the start for them, if they have concerns about, uh, about the the housing and how we're looking at it.
Yeah, I mean, the other piece too, just to offer it out is. Um. Or to clarify it is that as you get, as you're going to the housing piece, as you approach the energy aspect. That your intent is, which I would hope it was anyways, would be to work with the Energy Committee. Um, to work on some of those goals. And at that point in time, any input that. That was provided to the Energy Committee hopefully would roll into your planning sessions. So. Um.
That makes sense, yeah.
Is that sort of the proper course of of instead of just sort of shotgunning it? So I think you're good there.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments on that item? Onto new business, new businesses. This is an awareness thing, discussion only. The town has a conflict of interest policy that on an annual basis, we should be reviewing, so. Um, it's on the website and I will just put that out there and, um, if you could take a look at that. Make sure that you don't have your brother-in-law on a payroll somewhere for the planning commission. That'd be great. Is any, I don't know if there needs to be any talk about that or not. It's just kind of an awareness thing, but if you had feel discussing is needed, go ahead. Okay, moving on. So we did get a, um. Notification from Middlebury of their proposed zoning changes. I, and maybe Chris, you can help out here, but I I believe there's two levels here to think about. Is one, as an adjacent town. Does their zoning affect and become, is there a compatibility issue or in or the creating incompatibility issue? With the the adjacent zones. Um, and then the next one is, gee whiz, they're doing a lot of things down there. What? What is there to learn from what they're doing? So, um, I'm not sure if anybody's got any burning issues on. Either one of those aspects. So all I hear is crickets.
I'll just stop the nickel tour on it. Um, I don't believe the changes they're making. In their outlying zones that butt up to our southern border. Impact and there there didn't make any real changes to their rural outreach in that, on that southern one sixteen corridor, so.
I agree with that. So I don't think from that point, we have anything to say.
Nope.
Okay, the, that is, that brings us to the end of new, oh, wait a minute, we were gonna add an item for discussion about the Moncton. Proposed zoning changes, um, which their paper copies are in the, the, um. In bucket, so if anybody desires a paper copy, uh, let me know and I'll get it to you.
Um, and and again, I can speak on that one even more intimately, that there's real, really no changes that'll impact our near. Um, around our border areas. Their rural fives is very similar to our rural five, which is what basically butts up between the two towns. Okay, we have a little bit of crossover out on Hard trouble road, but it's sort of the same vision at both town tabs. I think we're in fairly good sync on those at this point.
Yeah. Any other comments? And it's probably online too.
Ah, it is. Yeah, they're having their public comment session tonight, I believe, in Moncton. I have to come here instead of there, because this is more fun.
Thank you.
Or shots.
Okay, um, that's the end of business. So at this point, open up the public comment. Well, I'm sorry, Melissa.
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of funny. Um, I don't know, like, because computer, yeah, computer issues. I missed the very beginning of last. Month, me, oh my gosh, last month's meeting. What's going on with the intern?
Okay, so we had one of these things going on with the intern.
Yeah.
And, um, I I was waiting for assignment of an intern and I believe. U V M was waiting for me to say we wanted one. And, um, so we lost out on a spring one. Um, they did, they did allude to the fact that if we were looking for somebody to fall that, um. And and beforehand, when we talked about what we were looking for for a project and what, they were quite, you know, the administrator were quite. Excited about what we were trying to do and and what we were considering. And the exposure that somebody could get, not only on this specific task that we're working on, but you know, the the whole concept of a recently. Um, approved plan and the whole and that aspect of it too. So, um. Rumor has it that we're high on the totem pole, if you will, if we go back this fall. And and some people are clear in their communications, you know.
So on that note, this is just sort of a a random piece too, that that this is mostly said that down on me. One of the discussions we had, or you all had a couple week, uh, meetings ago was what you would want on a public survey. And just watching what my kid just did in college, as far as her projects and things like that, um. That actually would be an amazing project for them to do the research. And actually generate this, I mean, we give them, you give them the basic idea of what you want, and then have them come back and create the proper survey. And then maybe your fall, and then the following year is the one who goes out and is knocking on doors. So utilize their their intellectual skill, not just, not just their manpower skill.
Yeah, that's a good point. I I now I'll bring it back up. My, um. But then, you know, they're all tech quizzes and everything now, and I I think it would be a great opportunity too. Um, for them to come up with a story, a video of the whole process. And that might work into a survey or something like that too. So I think there's a, there's a lot of cool opportunities for.
And would there be anything, uh, available it that anybody, any of the kids would be doing in the summer, especially if they're a local?
Not with U V N, um, I mean, I'm I'm not aware of it. I haven't seen anything by, come by about summer programs. I mean, Middlebury College does some level of this, the same thing, but. Um, the U V M program seems to be a little bit more better. At least I'm seeing more communication through that program.
So, so again, just watching my kid go through this for the last couple of years, summer internships are usually paid internships. And school year internships are usually a quote unquote project for the semester for them. And those are free for us. They they actually pay to go do it. It's sort of great. So.
Thanks.
That that help?
Yep.
Okay, so we'll move far back on to public comment. If there's any public comment. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Melissa, motions, make the motion.
Again.
Do we need discussion, or do we just need to bring it to a vote? So everybody's, uh, in favor of adjourning, say aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Thank you very much.
Thanks.
You only got two minutes back this time, so.
Thanks, Kevin.
Alright, thank you all.
I'll go take my dog out of timeout now.